Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Today is Monday, September 12, 2022, and it is 6:04. And Ms. Brown?
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Lampier?
Here.
Ms. Brown is present. We also have in attendance Mr. Donovan and Dr. Andre, and we have a few guests in the audience.
Before we start the meeting, I would just like to say that we should never forget 9/11, and that was yesterday, of all the people that perished needlessly in our country. So I just wanted to say once again, you know, never forget 9/11. I was on the board in 2021 when it happened, and we did a big memorial in Ashwa. I believe it was out in Stellows Field, somewhere out there in memory of the people who just perished that recently. So I just wanted to say that, that we should never forget 9/11. Thank you. And with that, the first thing on the agenda tonight is the Eagle Scout Project, Led Street.
Okay, we have Jackson in the audience. If he can come down to the... Sit right over there, Jackson, and...
Hit the button.
So, Jackson, why don't you give us a summary of what your project is, where it is, et cetera, and then the board can feel free to ask questions.
My project is basically going to be held at the Led Street School. There's a forest right next to the school that the teachers love to bring the children to, to kind of disconnect from all the internet and all the... or the anything that's been happening over the course of the past couple of days. And when I talked with some of the people there, they said that the kids, like, they kind of like hurt their legs a little bit walking. So I thought, hey, I could build a bridge over the walkway to make it a little bit more... a little bit better of a transition, make sure the kids don't have to, like, hurt themselves getting into this forest area. That's about... that's the gist of it, just helping kids get back into the woods.
I have a question for you. Where exactly is it by Led Street School? Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, okay. So there's a fire lane on the backside of the school.
Okay.
It should be... it's right next to one of the back exits that all the kids use to get over to the forest side.
Okay. And there's like a baseball field a little bit that used to be?
A little bit further down.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Yes?
Do you have the funding secured for this project?
No, the Eagle Board doesn't allow me to fundraise until I get approved by them.
Okay, and then, excuse me, when... if we approve this tonight and the full board approves it, then it will come back to us to show us the funding mechanism? No?
No, I think if we approve it, then he can just move forward. You know, have you spoken to Mr. Smith at Plant Operations?
Mr. Sean Smith?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, he said, um... yeah, I did. He actually told me to come tonight.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we've got that. Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the Eagle Scout Project at Led Street School. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the project, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, and you're all set. Thank you for what you're going to do over there. Thank you, too.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a driver's ed program.
Okay, so the driver's ed... the agenda says driver's ed program. There's going to be two pieces. We're going to speak about a vehicle tonight, and at the next meeting we'll talk about more specifics about the program and the funding of that program. But tonight, Dick Lancourt, who's been running this program for many years, has gone out and done some research on vehicles. Currently, they have... it's either four or five. I couldn't find the exact number before I left work today, but there's four or five vehicles they use. Keep in mind, these are the driver's eds, so you got to get them rigged up with the extra brake on the right side. And they're probably a little more hard miles than the typical car that you drive. But... so they have... they have... they'd like to replace the 14-year-old vehicle because it does need repairs basically twice a year now, it seems. So what they'd like to do is purchase the new vehicle, and that will be covered by the special revenue fund. The driver's ed special revenue fund has the funds in it. And then they'll take the 14-year-old Escape, and that will be passed on to Plan Ops. Plan Ops uses it as an extra vehicle, or they give vehicles to the security and the people that drive around a lot. So that's what they'll do. They'll put that back into their pool, and they may... they may get rid of the vehicle that's probably 22 years old or something like that. But he went out and got... the reason for the Ford Escape is all the vehicles are going to be Ford Escapes now, so it just makes it easier for everyone. And it's a small SUV, so it's a relatively good vehicle for driver's ed. So quotes were reached... we reached out to the three Ford dealers in the area, and Gropone Ford up in Concord had the lowest price, so the recommendation is to prove to purchase that 2022 Ford Escape for $32,845.
Now, do we usually get them from Gropone? Most of the time, are they...
Most of the time, we have the... Gropone had the state bid, and I'm not sure if they still do. But we've... most of the vehicles we've purchased, whether they've been vans or smaller SUVs, and there aren't too many of those, but have been from Gropone, they tend to have the best prices.
Okay.
Any questions from anyone?
Do all the vehicles in our fleet have some kind of, like, marking that show that they're a public-use vehicle?
Yes. They have something on the side of the vehicle, and they have a certain plate.
Thank you.
Ms. Lampier? Sure. Does the driver's ed special revenue fund come from just people paying for driver's ed, or does a school give them any money?
No, it's exactly... it's from... it's just from students paying for driver's ed.
Okay.
When I first got here a while back, the state used to give some funding for the program. They stopped that probably about eight or nine years ago. So now it's a self-funded program. Students pay the tuition and the...
Okay.
That's basically what pays for the cost of the program. The program currently is... the tuition for it is cheaper than most of the other options.
Yeah.
So not only is it cheaper, but it's also the students can get it at the South High School. And I think they might even go and pick them up at the North High School. So they don't... it's not like they have to go downtown or go somewhere else to get their training.
Okay. All right, thanks. That sounds good.
I can tell you, the program's pretty good because I ride through my neighborhood all the time down my street, so we get to see our students learning how to drive. So... and, you know, the vehicles always look like they're in good condition. So are they serviced here at the school, or do they go to, like, Gropone or Ford?
They bring... if they're under warranty, they might bring them to a Ford dealership, but after the initial warranty ends, they bring them to a local repair shop. I'm not sure which one.
I think I asked the last time, do we have a fleet contract with anybody?
No. No.
Is it worthwhile getting a contract, you know, if we have enough vehicles going there that have to be repaired outside of the city barn, you know, because I know DPW does the big stuff?
Yeah, they do the big trucks. I don't know. I'm not... but we've never looked into that, so I don't know the answer.
I think I brought it up once before, and I think I asked about looking into something like that, to see if, you know, we can save some money on a fleet contract. Because usually sometimes you can do better with the oil changes because they know X amount are going to come in. And also, can't hurt to find out. Get a couple of... it's going to be under $10,000, so you don't need bids on it, most likely. Ms. Brown?
I'm curious, how many students usually take advantage of the driver's ed through the school?
The... typically, there's between... there's usually about 35 students per class. They can... the max in a class can be 50. So there's the session where the students, the classroom sessions, they can handle up to 50. It's how many instructors they have for the students to drive, so that... but some... sometimes, you know, some students have athletics or play or things like that, so they'll... they won't do it. But typically, when we do the budget, we put about 35 students per session, and they run five sessions a year, four or five.
Just because my daughter is actually, like, driver's ed age right now, so I've just been doing all of the research about it. Is there... it seems... is there usually a waitlist for the class, and is it some... is that an area where we could actually expand to accommodate more kids if we had more instructors available, or is it pretty much tapped out?
Tapped out. It's... well, you have to get... the instructor has to be trained and get a certification. But they're... they're sort of working some... there's supposedly some new people that are interested in doing it. So we'll... that... there'll be more information next month on the details of those kind of questions.
Thank you.
Ms. Lampier, do you have any other questions?
Oh, no.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I'm going to move to approve purchasing a 2022 Ford Escape for $32,845 from Gropone Ford to replace a 2008 Ford Escape. Funding to come from Driver's Education Special Revenue Fund, 91.2201.99116081500.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. The next one is the CTE Purchases Manufacturing.
Well, you skipped one.
I did. Contract Led Street Elementary School. Sorry.
All right. Okay, so as the memo states, the principal at Led Street, Mr. Miller, received news that he got some more funding, some grant funding. Basically, he says he was notified by the DOE that had received extra funds that were recouped from the 2018-90 CSI funding. And the DOE said, can you at least get those funds encumbered by the end of September of this year? So basically, these two contracts that he decided to use, one is with BERC, B-E-R-C in capital letters, which is basically PD for teachers. We approved a contract with them two or three years ago on a grant that Led Street had at their school. This would be to continue with some of that training. And the other one is Ramapo, and that's a student leadership program that they've had good success with, where they basically train some of the older students to become leaders in their school, and then they work with younger students, and they... it's a progression so that there's always some sort of student leadership. The two contracts are attached to this, and they describe in more detail what these two services are. So that is the request by Principal Miller. Any questions?
I'm going to ask Ms. Brown a question. I remember sitting here, and we had some contracts that came through with the programs, and I was a little bit concerned about language in one of the grants. Was it one of these grants?
That's a good question, because actually, I think I do recall that. I think that did come through curriculum evaluation, and I do believe the Ramapo contract might have been the one you're thinking of. We just approved that in, I don't know, maybe three or four months ago. I don't know. Can you guys remember... can the administration remember when the Ramapo contract was signed?
I know that Ramapo was brought in front of this committee because it was grant-related, but it was a couple of years ago. If something came up more recently through curriculum, I'd...
So, yeah, so I don't know. We did circle back, and I think we re-upped the contract. But I... so I actually had a question related to that. I'm not opposed to it because I think... I do think that both of the programs through the BERC group and the Ramapo contract, I recall them in relatively recent memory, and talking about them. Is there... are we actually going to be able to fit this much professional development into our schedule? Because this is, I guess, another, what, $50,000 worth of services? Are we actually going to be able to use all those benefits?
Yeah. So ironically, when I was the interim Assistant Superintendent for these two grants were first introduced, so it was a couple of years ago, so I'm not quite sure what happened in the last year, and if there was any alter, like, different kind of conversations about the implementation. So I am familiar with both programs. They're top-notch. It's both professional learning communities and really student agency and advocacy. So finding the extra $50,000, the time for the extra $50,000, Mr. Miller is pretty skillful in using that time to minimize disruption in teaching and learning and maximize professional learning time or collaboration time for teachers. So as we're kind of growing the coalition of the willing, it's pretty amazing how fast $50,000 goes towards stipends or coverage and that aspect of it. So I think he'll be able to find that time.
The reason I'm questioning this was because there was language in one of the grants that really upset me. And when it came to the full board, I didn't vote on it. I will have the answer by the time it gets to the full board. Again, it was just... yeah, it kind of divides everybody, the language that was in it. So who would like to make a motion to accept this?
I'll make the motion. Hold on a second. Let me scroll back up to get the wording accurate. Approve the contracts with BERC for $30,000 and Ramapo for $20,000, funding from the CSI grant.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Two ayes, one nay. Thank you. The next one is, I guess, the CTE Purchases Manufacturing.
Yes, so there, last spring, there was an opportunity to write some grants. State said there's some funding available. This was funds that were held in reserve from the Perkins Grant. Now, the Perkins Grant is the grant we use for our CTE programs, and we receive typically $300,000 to $400,000 a year there. The Perkins Grant is very strict about what you can use it for. So they held aside... the state held aside some funds, and they put out in the spring, would you be interested in applying for some of these reserve funds? So there was a proposal put together to make improvements by equipment and get training for our manufacturing program. And the memo speaks to... describes what the... somewhat of what the program is. This has been approved, so the grant is ready for us to open it up. So basically, the $39,000 that we're requesting is the exact amount of the grant. So the proposal that was written, which is attached to the memo, is expanding access to an attainment of industry-recognized credentials. So it's... as you probably heard, some of our CTE programs have done a pretty good job at this. Some haven't as well. But it's working with industry partners in the city and the local towns around here. So the grant is different from most grants, and it was written specifically to purchase this. And so that's the request to purchase specifically what the grant requested.
Ms. Lampier? Yeah. I'm sorry, but I... what exactly are we purchasing?
It's equipment, and it's a program to teach the students how to use the equipment. And there's some... there's some certifications. Can Superintendent help me out here?
I just didn't know if we were purchasing, like, an actual thing, or if we were purchasing, like, software, or lessons, or what exactly?
Yeah. Essentially, it's a big thing getting delivered. It's a new state-of-the-art machine that's used in industry. So when we wrote the grant, it was to help our manufacturing program, and then so that the students could have a seamless transition if they were going to pursue the manufacturing field. So there is a delivery, and then there's some certification along so that we can actually use the machine.
So this is kind of like the curriculum materials for the course plus the certification requirements?
Yes. So this is in hopes. When it was written, we had students in the program. We're currently not running in full transparency the manufacturing program because there's zero subscription. So we were in contact with the Department of Education last week, and it's their hopes. So they said, still order the machine, we'll still get reimbursed for the grant.
Good evening, and welcome to the Nashua North Hope House.
Yeah. So, and speaking with... so the hopes, they've... when I spoke with the Deputy Commissioner, Jeff Beard, for CTE, he's like, still take receipt and grow the program. So he's like, even though there's zero kids, he was really happy that we approached them to say we don't want to waste money, but they see this as an investment in regrowing our manufacturing program. Because as we know, in this community, there's a lot of manufacturing businesses, so we're hoping to reestablish. And then, once we have a state-of-the-art machine, that, again, we could establish better partnerships.
Any other questions?
Would it be used for several classes, or just one class?
So it would be the manufacturing pathway. I'm not exactly sure everything that it can do, but if there is another program that might be able to utilize that machine, possibly they can be sharing within the... when the high school. So I'm not quite sure exactly what it does at the end of the day, but if they're doing some crazy, you know, laser and metal cutting, and another program wants to do that, then we have the equipment.
Is this something that we would need more investment from the school district in? Like, would it cost the school more money for more equipment to be able to use this effectively?
No, I think if we get the certification, we'll be fine, and then just having the right instructor to use it. So... but we're always looking at CTE programs to stay current and state-of-the-art so that, again, it's a seamless transition back right into industry.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Brown?
So I do support this. I know there aren't any students enrolled right now. I think that our CTE program is something that we should just be shutting the rooftops and promoting left and right. And I actually, you know, our biotech program and our CAD programs are both nationally and internationally recognized, and that's something that people don't always know. So I'm going to support this, but I'm curious if moving forward... and I know this summer, we didn't have a person directing the CTE program, and, you know, for extending our strict stances. Is there... is this going to be a priority moving forward, finding ways to advertise, target student populations, that kind of thing? Is that part of the plan?
So, yes. So Assistant Superintendent Poska and I met with two individuals last week, and they gave us a proposal today that's talking about really recruiting and remarketing CTE programs so that when we're advertising for a new director, that we have a blueprint and a framework to actually... when we met with the CTE faculty, they want to be, you know, in the top five. They want to be number one in, you know, New Hampshire and bigger. So these two individuals who are working at the state level, very well-known as CTE directors and consulting other districts, are giving us a little blueprint and help us direct... find the next director. So we're moving on it, but it is about rebranding, remarketing, and recruiting new people into the CTE programs.
Yeah, that's something I'd really like to see moving forward. I mean, I think that's a direction so many job opportunities that students, even college-bound students, can take advantage of the CTE program to get, whether it's part-time work, or whether it's a good foundation for... I mean, if you were into, you know, any kind of engineering, this is a great foundation for that. So, all right. I'm looking forward to hearing more.
Do you want to make a motion?
I do. I approve... I move to approve the Reserve IRC grant in the amount of $39,986.79 for the purchase of a Festo system associated... and associated equipment for the CTE manufacturing program.
I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next thing on... Okay, the next thing on our agenda is the Panther preschool playground surface CTE reserve.
Okay, so this is an interesting situation. We... No, that was just the bell, you got to be there now. So when you were wandering around the class, this was for you to get in.
Hello, parents, you should now be located in block one of your child's class.
Okay, so we, using some of the surplus funds at the end of, in May and June, we did a resurfacing of the Panther preschool playground. And going forward, we're also going to be doing, using a surface, maybe the same surface, but something quite like it, at Franklin Street. So that's one of the escrows that this committee and the board approved. We're waiting during this month, hopefully, the alderman will approve the escrows, and then we can move ahead with more contracts on those items. But basically, we sent out bids for this work. We received two bids, the third person was too busy to bid, and one was for $46,000, one was for $30,000. So there's a fairly significant difference. So the work was done, the work was done well, everyone was happy. The vendor that did the work, Emmy O'Brien, came back to Sean and Chris Lassard and said, you know, we made a big mistake on our end. We did give you a quote of $30,000, but the individual that we sent out to do the square footage made a big error. So they didn't, they didn't, it cost them a lot more to do the work than they had quoted us. So basically, they were 1,400 square feet off, which is almost half, because they quoted us 1,652 square feet, and they missed by 1,400. So they basically, whoever did the review of the space, did a very poor job. So they've come back to us, said it's about a $20,000 error on their part, and they would like to get back the cost of the materials, which is about $8,000. That's a round number, it's not, that's what they're asking for. They didn't, I don't know if the materials were exactly 8,000, but that was the ballpark. So they spoke with Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith feels that we've worked with them on a lot of our playground equipment, he would like to grant the approval for this. So since he couldn't come tonight, I'm speaking on his behalf. So that's the request.
Any comments? Ms. Lampia?
I just, because we are going to need someone to do the Franklin Street, and we've worked well with these people in the past, I mean, that would be one reason to do it. Also, it just kind of seems fair. I mean, they did the surfacing and everything. I was wondering about the, the money came from the CTE reserve account, the preschool Panther program, that counts as CTE?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's cool. Yeah, I mean, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay.
Ms. Brown, do you have any comments?
I got to admit, I'm a little conflicted right now. I understand, people make mistakes. But this is hot on the heels of a recent interesting predicament we had, where we had a bid come in, tens of thousands of dollars lower than the other two bids for upping, for what is, was it Harriman and Associates for?
CTE, for a CTE also?
To redo the CTE wing, I, you know what I'm talking about? It was, I was like $30,000 lower than all the rest of the other bids. Starting to get nervous, this is a pattern. And if we are constantly saying, well, yeah, this is crazy sticker shock, what's, this seems too good to be true, and then it always is, and then we always end up coming up with the money later, is that sending the wrong message? I understand that this is a good company that we've worked with, and it stinks that someone just made a clerical error. But we're starting to see a pattern.
And I understand that. I mean, when I first read, I was like, hey, you gave us a price, you did the work. Now, they're not, you know, I don't think this is their practice. If it is, they're going to be out of business real soon, because a lot of people are going to say, sorry, I paid you the, you know, if you're putting a pool in your backyard, and they tell you 30 grand, and they bill you for 25, and then they ask for it five months later, good luck collecting that, right? But I think this was an error. Sean knows the people, feels it would be a goodwill. We do have money in the CTE reserve. And as I said, once the escrows get approved, we'll be going out for bids. And we want to have at least two people. There's not a lot of companies that do this work, so.
And do you know, or do you recall that if the, we said it was $20,000, was that originally what was budgeted for the project, was actually considerably more? Would we, when we budgeted the plant and made the original budget?
Well, they, we, what we did was, we got, Chris Lassard went out and tried to get three quotes, and he got two quotes. O'Brien was the lowest at 30,000. So we went with them, and they did the work. So we paid them that.
All right, I'm probably going to let this go through, but this will probably be the last time. At least while I'm sitting here. 15 more months, and I'm all done.
Well, I'm going to agree with Ms. Brown, because as I read this and listened to this, I agree, we had three bids for the other project. One was 9,000. We all questioned the 9,000, because one was like 38, one was 60-some-odd thousand, one was 70-some-odd thousand. 9,000, we were told, yep, they're going to be able to do it for 9,000. That was really a low, low bid. And a 30,000, yeah, low, with 60 and 70, but you could almost justify that versus 9,000 when everything was double-digit. There's a difference here of between what they're, if you add their 20,000 that they made the mistake, it actually came out to 50,554. So they would have been higher than the other company that was, let me see where my eyes go, Patelli and Associates, Petinelli and Associates, if I'm saying that right, for 46250. So I guess my question is, you know, is the other company going to come back at us and say something that, you know what, they made the mistake, so of course they were lower? But they were actually higher than the bid was. They don't, you know, we're supposed to take the lower bids. I have concerns with this, I really do. I'm not going to support this. If my two colleagues wanted to go the full board, that's fine. But you know what? There's another one sitting out there that's really low. And if they can't get that work done for that $9,000, are they going to come back and say, whoops, we made a mistake, we're going to need more money on this? And by rights, we don't have to pay them, I don't think, I'm not a lawyer, because you gave us the bid? This is what you came up with? We decided to hire you? You made the mistake, somebody did not check the numbers, which should have a double, you know, check and balances, somebody made the mistake. You're asking the Nashua taxpayers here to come up with $8,000 more when you, your bid was lower than the original bid from the other company. So if my two colleagues wanted, let it go through. Have somebody make the motion, and then it will be up to the full board whether or not they want to pay this company the $8,000.
I'm inclined to let it go. You know, it's, they said the additional cost would have been $20,000, but they're only asking for 8,000, which still would bring the bid to lower than Petinelli and Associates. And also, they're not, you know, they're not trying to charge us the $20,000, they're only asking for a percentage of it. And also, the other one, I think it was Harriman, the other one? And I sit on the JS SBC, so they are super professional and like meticulous. I can't see them making a mistake like this. So I wouldn't think it's a, I wouldn't, I would be less likely to think that it's a pattern. I think this is just a one-time thing, hopefully.
Well, I'm going to kind of jump in here. I get it, that it was an error. But, you know, when you make an error on your invoicing, and you sign a contract, that contract says, this is what you pay. And they, by rights, I don't believe, I'm not a lawyer again, I don't believe that they have the right to come back. It might be easier to go to block two rather than make this decision. But by rights, I don't believe that they can come back and ask you for this, because it's a signed contract. It's the meeting of the minds. Not unless there's a clause in there that says, if we make a mistake, we're going to come back and ask you for it. And I'm not saying anything about Harriman, but I'm just saying that the bid was really low, in comparison to everything else, which we all kind of questioned it. I mean, they're building all our schools and renovating them, so I hope that they're a good company, you know? In my opinion, I don't want anybody to get sued here. Do you have anything to say, Dr. Andre?
No, I appreciate the dialogue and the conversation. I was doing the math as well, of how much they were asking for, and then even to that point, like, what's the true cost of the project, right? It's now ranging anywhere from 38,000 or $34,000 to $50,000. So how much does it really cost to do the work, and what's in those numbers? What I do appreciate is that they're not asking, it doesn't appear that they're asking for their labor cost. And we know in some of the projects that, in building, there's a whole bunch of change orders, right? And so we, they put out spec, and then all of a sudden, they're in the project, and then, you know, we get a change order saying, we thought we were going in one direction, we're going in another direction, and we kind of are approved. So I think in this aspect, they were just asking for the materials, which could be a change order, if we use that kind of rationale. But I was also looking at, you know, it would have been $50,000 if they put in the right materials and labor, and we might have been looking for the, at the other company, and then, so, but here's a company that came in higher and lower, and so was even $46,000 the right number, too? So, but in my mind, I look at it as some of our projects, is it's a change order? Like, we thought we were going in some way, we opened up a wall, and all of a sudden, it's a new issue. It is their mistake, I don't think legally, we have to pay for it. But I think it's, again, a part of that kind of good faith, we have millions of dollars worth of construction going on. I also don't want a reputation on the district that we're shortchanging some of our contractors, and it's, we're not a good district to work for, for $8,000.
Yeah, but we're not shortchanging, you know? That's how I look at it, we're not shortchanging. I'm just, at this point, not, I mean, goes to the full board, I might change my mind. But at this point in time, you know, I feel bad for them. They made a mistake. That's their error. And I'm not trying to be mean or anything, but I'm looking at it, you know, as a taxpayer, a member of the board, $8,000. I've owned a business before, and if I made a mistake, guess what, I had to eat it. And I couldn't go back to my clients and say to them, you know what, we made the mistake, I want you to pay me for my mistake. It just, you know, it kind of doesn't work that way sometimes.
Yeah, and I don't disagree, and I don't think, you know, looking at the communication with Mr. Smith, I think it's a good faith effort on our end. I don't think we're obligated to do it, and I think if we said we're not paying it, I don't want to speak for the company, but I don't think it would go too much further.
Thank you. Any other dialogue here? Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the additional $8,000 to Emmy O'Brien and Sons for the Panther's preschool playground surface. Funds will come from the school district's CTE reserve account.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nay. Two ayes, one nay. Thank you. The next one is the purchase of equipment for plant operations.
Okay, this is another Mr. Smith item. As you're aware, we've added two wings to the Penachuck School. So that's, we've added nearly 40,000 square feet of floor space to maintain. Plant Ops has standardized the floor machines, so that we have one brand now, a Tomcat brand, which allows us to repair them and use the same sorts of, same supplies to repair them. Simplifies everything. Cleanorama is the local authorized vendor, so they can, they can give us the best price in this area on the Tomcat brand. So Mr. Smith would like to purchase a Tomcat Pro 26 disc rider, and from Cleanorama, in the amount of $12,084.83.
So is this the only company, you said that's around here that does this?
They, they, like other vendors, can give you the best price on this brand. They're the preferred vendor for Tomcat equipment. That's a fairly common, common theme.
Anybody have any questions, any concerns? Okay, so I'll move to approve the purchase of a Tomcat Pro 26-inch disc rider, TC545V2-26TD, from Cleanorama of Gorham, Maine, in the amount of $12,084.83. Funds will come from the Plant Operation Miscellaneous Equipment Line, 91.1.22.2620.71999.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is donation, athletes?
Athletics. This one is some good news. We just typically, when we have significant donations, we'd like to get approval from the board and send a thank you off. But our athletic director, Mr. Gingras, has, an individual has reached out and said he will donate $5,000 to the football program. The company he works for matches whatever he donates, up to a certain amount, which I'm guessing is about $5,000. So it's a $10,000 donation coming to the program. He specifically wanted to use it for the football program. So athletic director Gingras spoke with the new head coach of Nashua North football team, and listed here where they would like to spend those items, mostly for improvements and replacement of equipment for the football program.
Any questions? Any concerns?
Yeah, I'm wondering, so if this, if this donation has been received over the past several years, so the football team is consistently getting $10,000, like, say, for the last five years or whatever, does that mean that we could possibly move some money from the football team to some of the other teams, so that, like, so the football team isn't like star quality, and the other teams are wearing rags? I mean, I just wondering, I don't know if that's a possibility.
Yeah, I don't think we're quite, you know, this is in Texas, so. You don't have a $50,000 stadium and a big giant scoreboard, though we do have a stadium and a pretty nice scoreboard, but that's for all, all rectangular sports. So yes, I'm sure Lisa takes a look at everything and says, okay, some of the funding came from elsewhere, so she can use some of her other operating budget funds to purchase, she doesn't need to purchase these items.
I mean, it's so generous, these are, I mean, to have this, this video system, so that, to help with college recruiting, that's, that's really cool.
Yeah. Well, she actually put the cameras in for basketball, and it was a year, year or two ago, she came in and she showed us how they all work, and you don't even need someone to man the camera, it just moves with the motion on the, on the floor. So this is an extension of that outside, I guess.
Any other questions, Ms. Brown? No? Does anybody want to make a motion to accept this?
Okay. I'll take the motion. I'd make a motion to accept the anonymous, the very generous anonymous donation of $10,000 to the football program.
I'll second it.
Just, do we need to say something about what the purchases are going to be for? Or can we just accept the donation?
Just accept the donation, that's fine.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay. Our next thing is a crossing guard update.
Okay, so for probably the last, excuse me, five or six years, Chris Lassard will update us twice a year, usually around now and then usually in January slash February about crossing guards. Safety's obviously very important to us, as it is to all the families in the district also. But crossing guards have historically been very difficult to find. It's a typically between a half an hour and an hour in the morning and then a half an hour, an hour in the afternoon per post. So even though the hourly rate is a reasonable hourly rate, you just don't work many hours. And if you have to drive too far, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to a lot of people. So we've struggled for a long time. COVID brought on, made it even more difficult. As Mr. Lassard says in his memo, of the 33 posts, 11 of them are currently unfilled. And he lists where they are, whether they're elementary and middle, or elementary or There's also, at the beginning of the year, some crossing guards, for medical reasons, aren't going to be around, so that leaves even more posts open in the short term. And so we do have, what he does on a daily basis, we do have two crossing guard subs that will take up some of this. If it's right near a school, sometimes a school person will go out. But the other is typically, it's, we do have an outside security person, so that person will take at least one or two of them, because sometimes one's a little later or earlier than the other. And then we do have some of the custodians who've taken, it's like a one-day training, who'll fill in and help us out. But it's not great news. It hasn't been. This is worse than it's been. This is the worst that I recall it's been with 11 out of 33 posts being open. So not something to vote on, more of just an informational thing. So if you do hear there's supposed to be a crossing guard here, the answer is probably yes, there is. But at this point, not sure what a solution is, what the solution would be.
Ms. Brown, did you have a comment?
So only because I actually recognize a few of these intersections, were there some crossing guards that would go to the middle school and then also go to the elementary spots at different locations?
Yes, I believe so.
They would travel back and forth?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm thinking, the people that I know I recognize going to multiple spots, I see those must have been some of the folks that we had, aren't available this year. So obviously, this is something we have to keep an eye on. Is there a chance, and this is a very long time ago, when I was in sixth grade, we actually allowed sixth graders near the elementary schools could help be crossing guards. They had a little training program, you got a little vest, and it was kind of a way to actually give some seniority and some responsibility to the students. And it was kind of a big deal. And, I mean, is that, I don't know, is there something that's not legal about that anymore? Or is it something we could maybe look into?
Did you grow up out in the woods somewhere?
I actually was a crossing guard, a very busy intersection, it had a stoplight and everything.
Well, I want to just add on that, because I grew up in New York, which was big, and my elementary was just a little block. And it was so important for us to be cross, we had those, like, white leather thing that went over us, and we had this badge, I hate to say this, but going back that far, but we were cross, but it wasn't the same type of, it was just like smaller blocks before you went across the big main intersection. You know, I wouldn't want to see, you know, the kids, fifth graders, really.
Yeah, I don't want to see them on Elmen Lake or anything like that. But if there's, I don't know, is that something that maybe near the elementary schools, we could look into, see if the legality of it? I don't know.
We'll definitely research, I think, some of the logistics, where the middle schools, so would those sixth graders or even eighth graders be losing instructional time? Because the middle schools start before the elementary schools, so what are they, it could be an after-school program. But we would have to look at that and what are, in the close vicinity of those schools as well. So, I mean, we'll definitely look if there's legalities to it, but, but I think.
Parents, please proceed to block three of your child's schedule.
I think just logistics on having students out of school and functioning as crossing guards, what's the value add and what are those students losing? But they'll be gaining a lot of leadership and responsibility, so.
Yeah, that's how I, I mean, if you do it, it's got to be students who have the ability to miss a few minutes of class and have earned the responsibility, earned that, it is responsibility. So, but, I don't know, maybe it's too many years later to not do that anymore.
You know.
The logistics of getting students back to class, of are we providing more buses and transportation because there, we have to move kids around, and it just gets a little hectic.
Because you see, on Kinsley and St. Joe's Street, there's a light over there, so there's, at least there's a button there, you know, for kids, which I wouldn't want kids to cross, because I know that I've got the microsociety school right down where, on West Hall Street. And I went to the planning board, and I had said to them, you really need to put a light here, so the cars, so the cars could get in and out, because the traffic is so bad. And just a thought, and the kids walk, well, they walk a straight path from the high school. They really don't cross over West Hall Street. But those are high school kids, and I get nervous about that also, because the cars drive fast. So I guess, question to the city is, in some of these bigger intersections, would it be somebody of light that stops the traffic for kids? You know, I think there's one up on Broad Street, that when we, when I was on the board, they were building homes up there, and there was a pedestrian light that stopped the traffic. So that's something, I guess.
I was thinking, looking at it, that maybe, I don't know how many elementary schools are involved here, but I mean, maybe we need another bus, another two buses, maybe that would cut, I just would hate to see anyone get hurt. And I know that some of our schools are walking schools, and so that there's a lot of kids out there crossing all these streets. And I just think that would be something to maybe think about. I know that we have a problem with having enough bus drivers as well, but, I mean, between, like, a bus driver, a bus could take care of more kids than a crossing guard, and it might be easier to get a bus than to get like four crossing guards, so, I don't know.
No, it's finding, buses are expensive, and, but, and finding bus drivers, they work more hours, they get paid more, so they're easier to find than a crossing guard, but they're not easy to find. And the training to become a bus driver is much, much more involved. So, you know, we.
We're full of excellent ideas tonight.
Well, hey, any idea, I mean, anything, maybe something works. It's worth giving it a shot.
Any more questions or discussion? Now we go to the Franklin Street questions that I had sent out to Mr. Donovan, because I keep getting emails. Dr. Andre got the email, Mr. Donovan got the email. I think that it's, the question, a lot of it came under fire over the $6 million HVAC system. And I wanted, in case the public didn't understand and they were upset about what happened at Franklin Street, that the school can't open, the HVAC system is out of control, the price, and I figured this is a good place to have discussion.
Parents, you should now be in block three.
They have the transparency, so if anybody asks, we can bring them back to this meeting on what's going on with Franklin Street and the cost factor. So.
Yes. So in summary, the idea behind Franklin Street, we first started looking mainly for two reasons. One was the special ed department was really looking to consolidate the preschools. And they think that that is going to add a lot of value to the preschool programs. Looking around the city to find anything where a school would fit, renovating any sort of existing building to meet school standards is significantly expensive. And a lot of landlords are not interested in selling you the building, they simply will, they'll charge you for the renovations and.
On the lights, turn yourself on.
Oh, okay. So we looked around and we did find this building. Remember Franklin Street used to be the, it was a Christian, Christian school. So it had been a school before. Previous to that, it was an R and D building for the Nashua Corp. So looking at, we were currently renting, paying about $50,000 a year to rent the first church for the Title I program. And we were paying, on the last year, about $170,000 for the Brentwood program out on Amherst Street. Those numbers were going to continue to rise. So we started looking, we worked with the first, with the church, not the first church, the church that owned Franklin Street. We ended up coming to an agreement to purchase that for $1,825,000, pay for it over four years, no interest. We also had some one-time funding that we received through an IDEA grant, and they said, here, you can, you got to spend this money, and sort of like that CSI funding that came up for the Burke and the Ramapo, sort of funds that aren't spent elsewhere in the state, and then they're offered to us. So we used that as a down payment, so therefore the cost to the so-called taxpayers, and I know federal funds are federal payers, et cetera, but these were funds, so that reduced that $1,825. So that's, it kind of made sense to do that. Now, we knew to get it, to open the school and get students in, we put about $400,000 aside to get repairs enough so that it was reasonable to open the school. Obviously, it's an older building. We renovate all our buildings, they're all on a cycle. We'll be, obviously, we've got the middle school program, we're going to be moving forward with Birch Hill and Main Dunstable, we've done Broad Street, we've done Sunset, so it's a cycle. The Franklin Street would have been put in that cycle. Where it would have been put in, we hadn't put it in yet, so we don't know. But then what happens? Esser funds come forward. Esser funds will pay for HVAC repairs at schools. So we decided that getting a new HVAC system in Franklin Street now, rather than waiting multiple years and using bonding money, Esser funds is a perfect opportunity to do that. So that's what we did. It is $6 million. I'm not an expert on HVAC systems, but I think, as we all know now, the cost of everything construction-wise has shot up significantly. The new middle school is $9 million more than we thought it was the year before we started it. So between the various labor costs and then the supply chain and all that, it's, so it's $6 million. I checked with Sean, he doesn't really know what it would have cost if we had done this before, you know, it would have been $4 million, $5 million. We don't know, so I'm not going to sort of make up a number. But it's $6,850,000, Esser will pay for it. So that was sort of an opportunity to use some of the Esser funding to help with construction at our schools. So that, I think, kind of answers the questions that Mrs. Johnson had put out there. The only thing that was a cost that we didn't fully expect when we purchased the building was the cost to put up the two fire escapes. Originally, we were told, and I'm not going to mention people or organizations, there was a school there, they were using the second floor. At some point, it went from you can use all three floors to you can only use the first and the third floor, for students. You could still use the second floor. So we said, no, the whole idea is to use the first two floors for students. So the cost we didn't realize was the cost of the outside fire escapes. And those ended up costing about $315,000. So, you know, we did have to cover those costs. But other than that, it's pretty much gone according to plan. And like I said, we wouldn't be spending $6 million on it if we didn't have Esser funds. It would be put into the bonding plan and been paid for later on. So that is Franklin Street. Any other questions or concerns about it?
Brown? Okay, thank you.
Okay, and sort of before I get into the financials and the transfer report, Ms. Johnson, you did ask about the middle school, the Chromebooks at the middle school level, and.
Yes.
The man here will help us out with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so as I mentioned in my memo, it's the Board of Education. So we are investigating, moving to one-to-one at the middle school sooner than later. As I mentioned in the memo, we have the number of devices. And so we have, for example, at Penachuck, over 600 Chromebooks and 580 students. But the way that it's, the Chromebooks are currently deployed is that the Chromebooks rest in a cart, and a teacher needs to sign out the cart, and so on and so forth. So while on paper, it looks like the students have access to a Chromebook at any given time, the coordination of that isn't true. We know over the last couple of years that our teachers have been uploading and putting resources into Google Classroom or using different apps to raise and address personalized learning plans, student achievement, gaps, and so forth. So what we're looking at is the redeployment of the Chromebooks. We're working with the building administrators and the director of technology to see what that will look like. We do have good examples in place right now at the high schools. This is the first year that we're, that they went full one-to-one as well, with the students taking possession of that. The only cost, we have the infrastructure in place, we have the devices in place, so we're not purchasing new hotspots, we're not putting in new wiring, we're not purchasing new Chromebooks. If at all, what we're looking at is, because middle school students are middle school students, or, you know, or they're, someone like me, I tend to drop things, or middle school kids tend to drop, kick, whatever. So do we look at a purchase of a computer bag or some kind of protective covering for the Chromebooks, if the kids are going to be carrying the Chromebooks? Some districts have moved forward in buying and purchasing those protective devices, but also a Chromebook, when you have them, like, after a couple of months, they lose their value. And if a Chromebook breaks, it's sometimes it's cheaper just to replace it than purchasing bags. And so we're looking at the cost benefit of that. Again, at the high school, we have procedures in place around insurance policies, and if a family can't afford the, paying the $25, do we work with those families? So again, we just want to replicate what's going on at the high school. We don't foresee too much of an additional cost moving in this direction, because we already have everything in place, minus if we want to move towards purchasing bags. I talked to a few administrators at the middle school level. Majority of the students are walking around with a backpack. I know my backpack is kind of constructed to slide a, like a laptop or a computer into it, so if students. So if students already have backpacks, again, we don't have to give them another bag to carry around. So, so we're just investigating that. Again, really, we want to make sure students have access to their resources anytime, anywhere. I mean, over the last couple of years, we invested a lot into, and the teachers put a lot of time and effort into Google Classroom. And so now it just doesn't make sense that the students don't have access.
Parents, you can now proceed to block four of your children's schedules.
The students don't have access to those resources because the cart's not available at any given time. We know in 2022 that we have access to technology, that we should have access to technology at any given time, if it's the right tool at the right time, so.
Any questions? So all of, have, have Chromebooks contributed to all of the high school students or just is it on request?
Just making sure the green light's going on. So it's my understanding that the high school should be deploying all their Chromebooks? That was in place prior? And as you're a parent of a high school person?
I'll get back with you.
Yes. So that was the plan for this year at the high school prior to my arrival, so.
So just, just to follow up. So I absolutely understand, like, you want to make sure that middle schoolers and high schoolers and elementary schoolers are all taking care of their equipment. Have we looked at what the cost would be if we had to get some kind of, even if it was just not a, even if it was like a protective cover to go inside a backpack or something?
Yeah, so it can range anywhere from 20 to 100 dollars, depending on what the, right? And so you times that by hundreds, it could add up pretty quickly, and so...
And when the Chromebook's only a couple hundred bucks, that kind of investment isn't worth it?
Right.
Thank you.
What was I going to ask? So are they going to be able to take these Chromebooks home or they just stay in the classroom?
No, the students would possess them 24/7.
24/7. So we have the insurance policy in place now, so in case they break them.
Yep. And so typically, we're, we would look at a cycle, knowing other districts and being familiar with it. So typically, a new sixth grader would get a, a new Chromebook and keep it until eighth grade, but then it's obsolete. And then they would get a new Chromebook in ninth grade and keep that through 12th, yeah, 12th grade. So you're always looking at replenishing sixth and ninth grade, and then whatever the model would be at the elementary school. So again, we want students to have access and opportunity to their resources 24/7. So other districts have been using this model for a number of years. You get the same amount of damages, but again, as teachers are putting their information into Google Classroom, it's just able for our families to know that there's a, a device that students will have at home. They'll have access to any kind of work that's in Google Classroom or a different platform. And we know that it's in the Nashua domain, so that we're able to push out information, monitor their, what they're looking at as well.
Okay. Wes, I've got a question. So these Chromebooks would be with them through the summer also? Or would they be turning them in at the end of the school year?
Yeah, so I think we would have them return. Some school districts are allowing students to keep them. What they found in those districts is if a student keeps their device over the summer, we're not able to upgrade or reimage or load new programs. So sometimes it's nice for us to recover the devices, and then they reimage and make sure there's no malware or anything like that on those computers. But it's a nice process for the technology department to clean out the information, update or upload any new software.
Also, so when we're giving out the Chromebooks now, do we really have a very good tracking system like we didn't have back when in COVID, that we didn't know who had them, what was broken, didn't come back? You know, because we lost a lot, we had a lot of damage. Now we have a policy that helps people, you know, in case it gets damaged. So it doesn't cost an arm and a leg to get it fixed. But we lost track of a lot of these Chromebooks, and these cost money.
No, I don't disagree.
Parents, you should now be in block four.
Yes, and that's one of the, making sure that we're tracking a little better. What's hard, sometimes even where the current system is, is that a computer rests in a computer cart, right? And so you might have four or five different sections using the same computer. So if it breaks, if it broke yesterday and you discovered it today, you might not know what student actually damaged the computer. If I assign a computer to you and we're tracking that and it comes back that it's broken, then I can track it a little differently. But right now, when computers are in carts, it's harder to track or actually monitor when that device was broken and who did it.
But having them sign it out, so we'd be able to track. So John got this, John Doe got this computer, Sue Smith got this Chromebook, and we know each and every student has it. If they don't want to buy, they understand, the parents understand the reason why this policy is being, you know, it's just like going to Best Buy. It protects you. Okay. So I was, and I just did around the number of 10,500 students. At $20 a pop here, you're talking over $210,000 to do covers. I don't know what kind of covers. I mean, you can get a cover, just a glass protector, like I know that's what I put on my iPad, just to protect the glass, because that's really what happens if you drop it. It's usually the glass that breaks, something like that. I mean, maybe we can get a vendor in and get a good price from a vendor to just put, you know, the glass shield on for all of them, if that's what we're going to do. Get it in bulk or have, you know, the IT department, maybe somebody knows how to do it. But it's a lot of money to put protection on, on these iPads. It's got to come from somewhere in the budget.
Yeah. So like I said, we're still investigating if that's a worthy investment. It's the same things with, with no covers on right now. A Chromebook can fall and crack, whatever. So we know if students are just transporting them back and forth, there's more app for more damage. So, but as I mentioned, we're still in the exploratory phase. This is one aspect of it. Obviously, we want teachers' input, so we're working with the three middle school principals to come up with a plan so that their students and teachers have access to these devices when they need them for their instructional purposes.
Anybody have any more questions, Ms. Brown?
So actually, I just have a comment. As a parent of both a middle and a high school student in the district, I will say, teachers, especially at those levels, I really do think that they've embraced a lot of the, the tool that Google Classroom can be. They, if you miss a day in school, your teacher, you're expected to go check your Google Classroom, which I think is, it's good. And even if you're in class that day, you can go reference back to when an assignment was made. I, I just wanted to commend the teachers, that I really think there's a lot of them that are really embracing the good parts of technology in the classroom. So thank you for that. And I do think that this ultimately, you know, I don't want to see people staring at their computer screens all day long, but I think there is a time and a place for it. And I think especially at the middle school and high school level, it can be used very efficiently. I know our Amplify Science is very computer-based, so you know, if a kid misses a day of class and they need to make up the work at home, we definitely want to make sure that they can, which is a great thing, that they can access it and see the thing on a different, outside of class, but make sure that they have the availability. So excellent. I think it's a good plan.
And I think this is, you know, that's what the question was, kind of around like, where, why are we doing this? So we, so the parents know out there and the community understands that they're on carts, we want to take them out of the carts, kind of doing one, excuse me, one-to-one with the students, but just, we have to protect the, our Chromebooks, because if they break and we can't replace them, then it's useless. So that's why I want to make sure we're able to track it. So if it does break, we know who had it and it gets replaced, so that student does have it again. Anything?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So I was just wondering how the IT team is doing keeping up with the Chromebooks? And like, you had mentioned, like, to bring the Chromebooks in over the summer and have them, them checked for malware and updated and stuff like that. Would that be something that our current IT staff could do with all of these, or would we need to hire more people?
So it would be overwhelming for them with the, the amount of devices. Typically, other districts look for student interns. So we would work with maybe some of our high school students or people who are interested in that, that field. But again, in the past, I, when the avenues and mechanisms, just to get extra people, is we looked for our high school interns. It's just really plugging in the computer, running a program, and then just reloading them, cleaning it up. And so it's not a student privacy issue, it's just really a restart, run the program, and then put them back in a pile, back to the school. So it's not a heavy lift, but we will look at internships or that aspect.
Okay. I mean, could you use the internships over the summer? Would that...
That's when we would have them.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, so it would be over the summers.
Any more questions? Okay. Thank you on that, Dr. Donbry. Next, we're going into our financial report, and then after that, it'll be the transfer report. So you can go from one to the other, Mr. Donovan.
Okay. We'll look at the month-by-month. There's two reports in your package, so look at the second one, the month-by-month. Keep in mind, we're just talking about two months, and they're the two summer months. So not a whole lot to talk about at this point in time, very early in the year. Just running through a couple of line items in the first section, salary and wages. You can see that there's only $1 million in July, $1 million in August. That's because all the school year people have yet to get paid. The teachers and many others got their first paycheck September 1st. So you'll see, going forward, that wages full-time number will be up 6.5, 6.8 million or so going forward on a typical month. Other than that, the wages temporary seasonal, that is the summer help that the Plan Operations Department has, typically college kids who come and help with a lot of the outside work. Wages per diem, the $14,000 there, that's a couple of the, our psychiatrists work in the summer, so we give them a per diem. That's in the teacher contract. And then the additional hours, those are the relatively large numbers in there, and those are for, that's the summer school costs of, of staff that we've hired for that program. And retirement and separation pay, I'll be doing more of an analysis of that when we get back together next month, that you can see that's $669,000. And I'll have a better breakdown, but that's the payments to the, most, to teachers, but I'll have, like I said, a better breakdown. But we'll see, August and September and October is when most of those payments are made. Okay. Fringe benefits, like I said, those are all calculations based upon payroll numbers made by the city. The next group, professional technical services, the, the new account there, 53452, that's called staffing services. And what, what that will be, for the most part, is that new firm that we hired to help us with subs, ESS. So since we're not paying the people ourselves, we're paying through ESS, it's a subcontractor, so there's a new account.
Can I ask you a question? Have they been getting subs for, have we needed any subs yet? Or we're just kind of good right now?
I, I don't, I don't know. It's too early in the year for me to answer that question. I haven't looked into it.
You just don't know. I know it's too early in the year, but you just never know.
Yeah, no, typically, we don't need lots of subs in the beginning of the year. People come back, I mean, they were out for nine weeks, they don't come back and start taking days off immediately. I mean, they may be sick or bereavement or things like that, but, so, but we'll, we'll get an update from them probably, you know, it's halfway through the year or so and have more information.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on... Mr. Donovan, so the total over on the right, it's negative for that? There's no, there's no amount of money set aside for the staffing?
Yeah, it, it's not, the budget, let me look at the other report quick. It may be because we didn't, the transfer didn't go through yet on that account, because we...
Oh, because it's brand new?
Yes.
Okay.
Parents, you can now proceed to block four of your child's schedules.
But yeah, I'll, I'll verify that and we'll make sure we, we get it right. But we had to, when we did the budget, this was not determined at that point in time, so we budgeted it to a labor account like we typically would have.
Okay.
So, but I'll, I'll confirm that and hopefully next month, it'll no longer be a negative number.
Okay.
Okay. Nothing else too particular there on the 53s. Switching to page two. Electricity and gas is early. Keep in mind, the electricity costs have skyrocketed, though we've got a locked-in number at seven cents. So that's going to save the district a lot compared to what the average Joe is paying, about a third for the, for the actual electricity itself. The transmission will still be higher. Copier maintenance agreements, $41,000. That's sort of the first half, but we had a credit left over from last year, which I applied here. So that number's typically more like $75,000, but we had a credit, so that'll probably be a little lower this year at the end. And then rentals, rentals, that's sports. We paid the gymnastics gym rental of $5,000, and there was, there's another $5,000 for golf course. We always used to get the golf, the golf course would not charge our teams to practice. This year, we're getting charged to practice. So being a golfer, it's worth it. But nothing we can really do about that. COVID did bring more people back to golf, just in case you didn't, didn't know that, the courses got busier. And I think that's continued on. Okay, other services...
Why they should let the kids play for free.
What's that?
Which is why they should let the kids play for free.
No, they should. And I think maybe that will revert. We'll see. The other services, telephone, things like that, nothing, nothing too big there. You can see there's no transportation towards the end, no transportation costs as of yet. Those will come in next month, though our first student tends to be very slow at billing, so I wouldn't be shocked if they don't show up until October. Other than that, not too much supplies and materials, the 61 group. So you can just take a look at, at, for example, educational supplies, $79,000. That's a pretty big number, but that's the teachers ordering in advance of the students coming in.
I have, sorry. The, the tuition out of district, $391,000. Is that for half the year?
No, that's...
One month?
That's probably just the summer school part.
Oh, okay, so it was all paid at one time? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, you're going to see that, that number's going to range from $400,000 to about $600, $700,000 a month.
Do you, do you, do you know offhand if the numbers have gone back up now that we're out of COVID? If we have more kids going out of district, or if they're still pretty low?
The numbers are still lower. The cost per program has gone way up.
Okay.
Though last year, for the first time ever, we were below budget on that line item. So we'll see what happens. But it's, it's a very difficult line item to estimate, you know, because you could have four kids move in next week that are all already in out-of-district placements.
Parents, we would like to thank you for joining us at National Open House, and we hope that you have a good evening. Parents, if you're a student who is in a B block and has a chorus or a band, you may proceed to that room at this time. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So supplies and materials, you'll see things like educational supplies. They'll order, you'll see that high the first couple of months of the year. Cleaning and janitorial supplies, obviously, getting the schools ready for opening. So, and then skipping to the equipment, I mean, 71, which is computer equipment. We make the purchases for the most part early in the year. Same with the, on page four at the top, the computer software. We pay most of those subscriptions, most are annual subscriptions. We pay most of those during the summer for the whole year.
I asked a quick question also while looking at this page. The supplies for the HVAC, we've, I know they're doing some different kind of installs for different types of, types of HVAC systems at different buildings. It has seemed kind of high that we're already 17% through our yearly spend. Could we just get an update from Sean, maybe, if our general supplies? I mean, I'm guessing that's filters and things, is going to go up moving forward with these new systems? Or if it'll stay the same?
I will find out.
Okay, then we look at the capital improvements. You'll see that there was a $268,000 charge, the credit. That was an error, it was charged to the wrong account, so we reversed that out. That was for the track, so it should have been charged to a capital account, not in the operating budget. And so other than that, you know, 7.97% spent through the first two months, which is small, but they're summer months. So that is a quick rundown of the financial report. Transfers, I believe there's only four of them. The first one is they're taking, the Purple Panther Preschool, who we spoke of earlier. They're taking, they had budgeted some money in equipment. They're moving it to supplies to increase their supplies for the beginning of the year. The next one is CTE North, and that's moving from the supply account to miscellaneous equipment. And that's to purchase a Hatco Booster Tank, which I looked up, and that's related to water, heating water. And it's probably, it's used in restaurants. So don't know exactly why you need that much more hot water, but I'm no chef to speak of, so. And the.
That's a lot of pasta.
Yes. The next one is they had a, the CTE department had an inspection of their auto program. And so they had to spend some money, take it from supplies and put it into contracted services to fix the lifts for that program. And the final one is Ledge Street Elementary, simply moving it, they're moving from office supplies to educational supplies. So that is it. I don't think there's anything over $5,000. Well, there is one that's $5,000, so if you want to be safe, you can approve the transfer report.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the transfer report for, is that August?
Yes.
For August 2022, as presented to us.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Anything else? Any questions? Okay.
So all we have?
Pretty good, this is such a great committee. I know, we're happy that you're back. Not that we miss Neil, but, you know, we like him too. But happy that you came back to us. Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we're adjourned at 7:35. Thank you, everybody, for coming.